We'll call a regular meeting of council to order at 7:02 for Monday, June 18th. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Seppert?
No, there is none.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Councilor Byer, Councilor Valentino, all in favor? It's carried. We're now going into presentations and delegations. We have a delegation, Thompson 2020, with project managers Jim Gibson and Harold Smith, and our economic development officer, Keisha Davis. If you could please come forward to the delegation table. And we have a full agenda, so we're going to limit you to ten minutes. Harold?
All right, so a message received. How do I make this so it presents now? How can I get it up there? I'm guessing it's this one right here?
Can I help it out?
Yep, there we are. All right, thanks very much for allowing Thompson 2020 to come forward again and give you an update. I'm Harold Smith, project manager with Thompson 2020. I'm joined by Keisha Davis, economic development officer with the city of Thompson, and my colleague, Tim Gibson, as project manager as well. There we are. So we've changed up our presentation rather than focusing on the individual projects. Our presentations are now taking the form of some different themes that cross all the different projects. One of the big ones is community engagement, and we've got several different areas where we're doing community engagement. I know that we can improve our communication with the community. We're always looking for ideas in that regard. A couple of things that we've done since we met last time was the Thompson2020.ca website, Facebook presence and page, bi-monthly newsletter, presentations to city council, but also to other organizations, and committee meetings. Now, under each of our projects, we've established a committee of citizens who have come forward, answered our call from earlier presentations, and are volunteering to act as a focus group and our sounding board. Another one is, we've got, under engagement, here's a sample of our latest newsletter in April, as well as a sample of one of the job fairs, and Tim will talk some more about the job fairs next.
Can you back up?
Sure.
Just to talk a little bit about the job fair, and firstly, it's great to be here. We don't get here enough. Also, it's been about a year, so it's my pleasure to talk about some results, some of the things we've delivered on. And one of the things that we were tasked right up front was to get out in front of the Valet affected workers and help the workforce adjustment department work with Valet employees as well as contractors that were affected by decisions. So we held our first job fair in February, and then the second one was in May, and we have a third one scheduled for the first week of September. So, next slide. First one was in the campus at UCN. UCN has been a partner of Thompson 2020 right up front. They made it very, very well-known, and we got a lot of good support from them, and we've been partnering basically with them right from the beginning. First job fair, we had some 20-plus employers. Hard to say how many people got through the second or came through the two days that we ran it. The second job fair, we had 400 job seekers come in the two days that we were actively engaging in the community. Excellent. Mr. Keisha?
Okay, so continuing on engagement of residents, we've, for the past few months, been carrying out a community survey, community amenities survey, and so far, we've actually gotten over 400 responses to this survey. And just to, for those who don't know what the survey is about, it's just to assess communities' take on what they consider when they're deciding whether or not to remain in Thompson, what needs to be improved, and what's good in Thompson. So, so far, we've had over 400 responses to this survey online. We've conducted six focus groups with various community organizations, including Mamawitak, Thompson seniors community, UCN, and some others, Chamber, and so on. Where we are at now in terms of that collection of data is that I'm actually conducting one-on-one interviews with some key community stakeholders, and just general community members who have previously expressed interest in kind of communicating their own take on what is happening. So we want to incorporate that aspect in the final analysis. I've already started looking at the data that we've collected so far, and the intent is to put forward several recommendations by the end of summer. So far, in terms of some of the themes that are coming forward, we're seeing public safety. People are saying that public safety is an issue, just in terms of homelessness conditions that we see every day. Healthcare is an issue in terms of wait time and so on at the hospital, just overall affordability, cost of products, goods and services, housing, so on. But the intent here is to look at what those issues are, and not only the issues, but look at the good things that are also happening in Thompson, communicate both message to the public, and also to identify champions who can move forward with some strategies that we will put forward in terms of mitigating some of the issues that were identified. So that's where that's at right now.
Thanks, Keisha. I think that's Tim next. Tim? So, another project that we're on is under the business redevelopment. Through a number of the initiatives, we were in contact with real estate professionals, investors from outside of the community, and a lot of them were very surprised with the level of investment currently taking place in Thompson. It was identified pretty quickly that we needed a bit of a marketing strategy to broaden the message about the opportunities related to specifically investment in Thompson. And so we're planning an event in Winnipeg for next week, and it's titled Emerging Economic Opportunities in the Future of Thompson. It's a presentation, or it's an event, that we're coordinating with cooperation from Valet, and targeting specifically people in the finance field, real estate, and legal fields, as influencers of investment decisions in Thompson and elsewhere. And it's really just about raising awareness, and so we're putting a lot of our effort right now this month into making sure that that is a successful event. One of the items that's come from a lot of our consultations and work with our committees has been the need for a broad marketing strategy, something that complements the destination marketing strategy that's being undertaken by the tourism industry here in Thompson. We see that we want to have a marketing strategy that complements and works with that. As well as I mentioned, we're working to increase our promotion of the community, both online and offline.
As you all should know, if you don't, the Northern Workforce Development Center opened in June. It was announced by the Manitoba government. Kind of picture, upper left there is Ryan Landon, Doug Lovstad signing off on a letter of understanding between Valet and UCN. I guess two pieces of work that Thompson 2020 really assisted and pushed along and helped was both of those from a provincial perspective and also from a Valet, UCN perspective. You know, as you know, when you sign a document, a lot, countless hours went in behind the scenes, so Thompson 2020 was a big supporter of what happened that day and from that day forward for Thompson. Also in that picture is a operator that's being trained in a drill simulator in Winnipeg. And one of the things we're trying to do and help support through the Northern Workforce Development Center is various trainers local to Thompson. One of the problems we have, or could have, and we're trying to avoid, is not have the trainer local to Thompson. So, next slide. These slides mean more to me than, with all due respect, Doug and Ryan, but this is really nice that the first top picture is class one driver training graduates. So, we took eight impacted, affected local employees and got them trained up, and they became graduates and truck drivers and are all gainfully employed. We've also done several security guard classes, core safety training, class five, train the trainer, and heavy equipment operator, train the trainer. So we're positioned well, again, with trainers local to Thompson. Upcoming, we see a repeat. Again, we feed off the job fairs, so it kind of works hand in hand with truck driver, class one driver training, several intakes planned for the fall, industrial skills training, flagging certification is happening this week, Wednesday, at Northern Workforce Development Center. Front-end loader training and forklift training will be developed and should be in Thompson July, August of this year. So a lot of effort, a lot of support there.
Under the community amenities project, one of the initiatives is to look at lifestyle housing, which is sort of a catch-all category for cottage lot development, rural residential, and large lot development. And we, again, we had a committee of citizens come and throw some ideas together, look at what they're interested in, and our view is that we want to get these products onto the market so that if there is a, if there's a market for them, the market will drive it. Our objective isn't necessarily to have, we'd love to have the land developed, but a first step is to get them on the market. So the two that you see here, both are drawn out, but they're conceptual drawings only. They don't mean that we have decided on a plan. Our approach would be that either a developer or a co-op of property owners would come together and they would develop their own conceptual, their own development plan. So we're not recommending that we drive that. So these are two areas. One is off the golf course road, and another is off of the horse stable road, for two distinct sort of styles of development. We've made a number of detailed recommendations to the development review committee of the city. Those parcels are both within the city of Thompson. There will be actions that will be required by the city in order to make those a reality and get those available. Our hope is that we can run a request for proposal and have it completed by the fall so that a potential developer can have winter construction season to start doing work on those lands. And so we're, really, not putting the pressure on the city, the recommendation's really just gone to development review. We stand ready to help in any way to help them work through those options. The third one is a process outside of the city boundaries, where it's a different process. It doesn't require as many actions by the city, but the map is a little bit hard to understand. It's oriented the wrong way. North points right on this map, not up. And it's, but trust me, it's an area north of Paint Lake that is boat accessible to Paint Lake, that we have submitted on behalf of Thompson 2020 an application process for purchase of land. Our main goal there is to get ahead of the curve in terms of the circulation process and the process for crown lands to clear a parcel of land before it's available for sale. That process takes a while. I've heard a minimum of six months, and so we wanted to get that in. When we're further down that, we have a better understanding of what issues there are, then we see Thompson 2020 running an RFP similar to the one for the other parcels, for a developer to take that on and develop lakefront cottage development. I'll talk about the first one on this one, cryptocurrency. We have really just done, been sort of involved in a support role. We've advised the city that this might be an opportunity, and the city acted quickly, and I want to thank you for that, in amending the zoning bylaw to accommodate that as a potential use in the industrial zone. And we facilitated, we worked with Valet on a request for proposals to see what interest there was. We interviewed potential developers who were interested in using the surplus power for cryptocurrency mining and data centers. And basically, the parties who were screened and qualified through that process are now working directly with Valet, and that's a process that we're not directly involved in, that's between Valet and the proponents. So we're hopeful that something will come out of that, some other investment in the community.
Quickly on the greenhouses, there's really two components here. The picture shows a kind of a backyard unit with a heat sink feature that, the first, they're manufactured here in Thompson. First two units are going to be installed at Artie Parker High School this week and next. And secondly, the greenhouse classroom is an emerging project that Thompson 2020'd like to support. The city's already given a letter of support. Totally different in scope and nature, it's also a heat sink with some bricks that, what's the term? I've forgotten it now, lost it. Yeah, hold heat, sorry. Anyway, enough said on that. We'll have more announcements and kind of further input on that one coming shortly.
Thank you, that's our presentation. We'd be happy to take any questions.
First of all, thank you very much. You guys are making some great accomplishments. In terms of the Emerging Economic Opportunities Conference in Winnipeg, were you thinking of taking, I know it's in conjunction with Valet, are you thinking of taking anybody with you, such as the Thompson Hotel Association, or anybody from our transportation sector or construction sector? I have three questions, by the way.
One. Yes, we've, through our committee that is advising us on Project Three, we've identified a number of people in our, there'll be a delegation down there. There will be Thompson ambassadors that are very representative of the community.
Next question is regarding the marketing strategy. Travel Manitoba, I believe you were at that workshop as well, is taking you through a very intensive process. I'm just wondering, when you say we need a marketing strategy, is it going to be tied into that one so that we're not reinventing the wheel and having yet another series of workshops?
So absolutely, I understand that the Travel Manitoba supported initiative is looking at Thompson as a destination marketing, and that's obviously, if you were to draw a circle of the marketing strategy, Thompson as a destination would be a subset of that, right? But it's not the whole strategy. A big part of that strategy would revolve around just making sure that we're projecting images about Thompson as an opportunity for investment, not just tourism, but investment, just general attitudes and responses about Thompson, which currently, depending on where you look, isn't always that positive, doesn't tell that whole story. So very much so, we would see it be complementary to that and not duplicate that effort.
And the last question. How many trainers are you training under the Train the Trainer program?
Depends on which topic, Penny. The heavy equipment, we only have one local right now. We'd like to have several. Obviously, it's easier if you have one to grow that. So it's, we're just starting, but we want to have at least one locally for pretty much everything we do.
Speaking of residents in your survey, is the survey done now, or are you still looking for residents to complete it?
The survey online, I've closed it, so I'm no analyzing that portion of information. What I'm doing now is conducting interviews, but I've selected, you know, a few people.
What if you were a member of a group and you wanted to be one of your focus groups? Is there still an ability for that, or is that done too?
There's still an ability to do that.
And that would be contacted? Back Thompson 2020, do you have a second?
They would have contacted me, and I will set that up, yes.
And my last question is in regards to your event next week, why Winnipeg?
Yep, you've had that question a lot, Councilor Valentino. The reality is, and this comes from conversations with a number of other, a number of folks, especially in the finance field, there's, investment doesn't happen without having someone outside of Thompson, oh, green light that, whether it's at the banks, or whether it is, whether or not potential investors even get shown that option by commercial real estate developers. We, now, one of the things I didn't mention is that we do want to have a follow-on event similar to that in Thompson, but there was a pretty urgent need that came from a number of conversations with different players. This came from a different, number of different directions. But really, the view about Thompson was, in those, in that group, those groups that I identified, the prevailing view was that Thompson was turning into a ghost town, and they were floored when we talked about reinvestment in the community taking place. I mean, it's a pretty big story, $160 million of investment identified in Thompson this year, the bulk of it from the private sector. That message isn't out there. When you break down where that investment is happening, retail sector, service sector, transportation is a huge one, and it's, I hate to use the word perimeteritis, but that's just one of the barriers that we come up against, and so we're getting very good response from people who want to know what the Thompson story is, and they're not going to go out and find it. We need to go and make this presentation. That's certainly what we feel. They're not, we're not going to find them here. I think it's part of a broader initiative. The Thompson, the Manitoba Chambers of Commerce are also going to arrange a northern tour next year, and we'll be right in on that, but we think that there's value in having a specific Thompson presentation.
Yeah, thank you. I'm very interested about the meeting that you guys could have next week. From what I heard, that means you already have an appointment with the investor group or some, whatever, different sector that you guys going down there to meet them, to sell Thompson, what we have, what value for them to come here to invest, and am I right or am I wrong, that part?
Yeah, you're right. We've set up that appointment already. We've identified, we've identified people that will, are influencers of those decisions in the Winnipeg market and in real estate and in finance. We've done, used local contacts through the folks who have come forward for our Project Three committee, and they've talked about, for example, in the finance industry, they've talked about who they would, who they need to see, see that presentation. And we've sort of put feelers out through the folks who we've been dealing with on the cryptocurrency and on other developments. So we've developed an invitation list to bring people together for a presentation.
So, does that mean you already have a meeting with, I mean, going to have a meeting with a group of people, or you going separate individually?
It'll be, it'll be a presentation with a group, with follow-ups individually to those people who participate.
My other question is, Keisha going with you guys or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Clara?
Yes, thanks. Cottage lot development across the river, is that surveyed? You're showing a drawing there, is that a drawing based on a survey?
None of those have been surveyed.
Okay.
Those are successful plans that would be, it would be a step that people would go to before they survey, but those, no lots have been surveyed. The developer will decide what they want to build based on what they think the market is, and so that'll come forward through the request for proposal process.
I have another question, okay. You talked about purchasing cottage lots at Paint Lake. Are you talking about purchasing a group and land and then reselling it, or how, you mentioned purchasing at Paint Lake, a request for proposal, what, can you elaborate, please?
Sure. So Thompson 2020, in order to start the review process of the province, has applied for the purchase. So that they've started their circulation process, to, there's a list of groups that they will consult with before making the decision. We wanted to start that process because it takes several months. In the meantime, we will prepare a request for proposals for either a private developer to do that and purchase that land from Thompson 2020, or take over that process partway through. It'll either be a developer or else a cooperative. We'll hold a public meeting to explain what that process is. It could be that a number of cottagers want to develop, to be the developer, and they want to put together a proposal and develop it as a cooperative. There have been examples of both of those. There've been examples of cooperatives doing that, like a group pulling together and managing the project themselves. All three of those parcels that I showed you, our recommendation will be that they be open to that same process, where you're looking for a developer or a cooperative to come forward. And they may have different criteria for each one, for, in terms of what's the most important thing you want to measure in terms of selecting who's the successful proponent.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood, because I was thinking that you were saying that 2020 was going to purchase, and my next question then was going to be, do you have that much funding that you can purchase cottage lots and resell them? But that's not the intention.
Well, in order to start the process, we had to fill out an application for purchase.
I see.
We don't know where it's going to end, but we wanted to get some lines on a map and get them circulated in that process. That's really the, we don't know exactly how we're going to find our way out of that tunnel, but we're going to, we want to get it started. We're hopeful that, as an interim measure, when we do the RFP, that there will be a strong response, and I think that that'll be our, how that will end, is it'll be a developer taking over.
And that's something that you'll communicate at your breakfast next week, I would assume.
You'd better believe it, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. Look forward to the meeting next week, and thank you again.
Everybody have a great summer.
Now, moving into general inquiries, would ask, anybody has a question of council, please come forward to the delegation table, state your name and ask your question, and again, general inquiries is limited to 10 minutes. Any questions? Please come forward. If you could state your name and ask your question, thank you.
Rita Worstrow, longtime member of Thompson community. This is regarding the meeting of last council, and I have some questions. I would like to know, who reconciles the figures on invoices before the check is written? Is there some body of people who go through the invoices to be sure that the figures are right?
There's a process in regards to staff prior to getting to the finance committee, then the finance committee reviews, then council is made aware of all of the checks and circulated. Council has an opportunity the week prior to the council meeting to look at the checks, and then the check register comes to council, as there is this evening, for discussion on any specific checks.
Thank you. Why are there changes, I'm hearing, I think it was on the radio, that there are changes going to be made to the presentation of the check registry?
With council at this time.
On the agenda. On the registry, I don't see where they have the income coming into the city so that we can kind of, as taxpayers, see what's coming in, what's going out. We can kind of be aware of, why is that income not in there as well?
Check register is a record of expenditure, not a record of income expenses. I'll ask Jen just to speak to that. The income would be found on a balance sheet, and there are annual budgetary documents, but the check register is just a reflection of expenses paid for by check or through payroll. Jen, anything to add to that? Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Now, on that same vein, is it possible for us as citizens of Thompson to get access to that kind of ledger, or whatever it is called, so we can see what's coming in and what's going out? Is that available to us as citizens?
General public has access to everything that's a public document. For instance, our financial statements are public documents. To that level, I go to Jen to regard to where the line is in regards to individual informations. To that level, I go to Jen to regard to where the line is in regards to individual informations. Specifically, would an inv, individual invoice be available to the general public?
It would be available for inspection, but not to have a copy, so if, if at any point a member of the public wanted to come and inspect something, that's, that's available.
The action would be to come to the front desk and ask to see a specific, you would meet with Jen, review the invoice, but you couldn't take a copy of it. Okay. Other questions, please come forward.
Les Ellsworth, retired steelworker, very concerned about Thompson. The last council meeting, I came and I asked a number of questions, wondering if there's going to be some answers tonight to those questions.
I reviewed the tape, and your question specifically to comments made by Minister Pedersen will be addressed, there's a letter in the agenda package, and I'll make my comments pertinent to your question at that time.
Okay. Regards to the kids camp, where are we with that?
The kids camp at this point, the council has passed the budget for 2018. Direction by this council to administration was to, uh, make the budget cuts that were identified of approximately four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which included the summer sports camp, so there's been no change in that.
So if the community came on board, is there any way there could be a committee struck? I, I noticed on 2020, you add public safety. Now maybe it's only me that follows Facebook and the news, but it seems that there's a lot going on in Thompson with our young people. And again, to cancel a kids camp, and I hear you, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars is not a small number. But I don't know, because I don't know, if you reached out to the community, if you reached out to business, if you reached out to parents and said, look, the city can't afford this. Is there any way we can work together, and I've been at different committees in the last while, that questions came up. Maybe there is help in the community to have a kids camp that would lessen the burden on the city, and would also help our kids during the summer to be doing positive things, rather than possibly negative things, who's got nothing else to do. So as a citizen, I'm quite concerned, wasn't a part of the budget process naturally, but quite concerned that, um, that's one of the things that got caught. I think we need it, and all I'm saying, Mayor Fenske, is sometimes you need to reach out to the community and say, look, we need help through the business sector, through the residents themselves, especially through the parents. I've heard a lot of parents say that if we were asked, I don't know what they get charged, but we would have paid the extra. And so I'm here to tell you, there is a big concern, and there's a lot of talk in the community that this kids camp was canceled, and I asked at the last meeting that it would go back and be reconsidered. Apparently what I'm hearing from you tonight, that is not being done, you've made a decision. I want to tell you, I think it's a bad decision, and I think that we need to work together, not against each other. And so when the city makes a decision that big, and our kids are a big issue, they're a priority, they're the future, and we want to get them on the right track, and I'm here trying to look for a solution, not a bigger problem. So again, I am asking that the city definitely go back and look and make an appeal to the community. And I wouldn't have a problem being a part of appealing myself to the different organizations to see if we could get more money into a budget to be able to do that, that's all I got, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Second time, any questions or comments? Third and final, thank you, we'll now move on to committee reports, we have the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee report, chaired by Deputy Mayor Smook. Sorry, I missed one, sorry. Regular meeting of council, resolution, sorry, resolution two zero one eight one four five, moved by, oh, we don't have a seconder, could have a seconder. Thank you, resolution two zero one eight one four five, moved by Council Ellis, second by Council Wong. Be resolved to minutes, the regular meeting of council held in Council Chamber City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, June twenty fourth, two twenty, two thousand and eighteen, be adopted and circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor? Carrie D'Antoni, thank you. Now we're going to the committee reports, Public Works and Infrastructure Committee report, and the chairperson is Deputy Mayor Smook, I'll load her to present the report.
Good evening, everybody, this report covers March to May twenty eighteen. Committee members are myself as chair, Councilor Penny Byer, Mayor Danis Fenske, Gary Sapatelli, Curtis Green, Arkham Ajit Singhil, Neil McLean, Don Wood, J.R. Beavis, Daniel DeCorby, Devin Little, Anthony McGinnis, Robert Belacca, and, and, Anno Agawal. The resource person is Lindsay Anderson. Meetings, the Public Works and Infrastructure holds meeting on the first Thursday of each month. As we noted, this month it was on the twelfth due to conflict with other meetings. Operational highlights, daily safe operation discussions, four burials for this period, seven burials in total for twenty eighteen. Mechanical department addressed ninety-seven different unit repairs during the period. Snow operations were in full swing, with two shifts operating Monday to Friday, shift work concluded May eleventh, twenty eighteen. Contractors were actively, actively using the snow dump site, snow removal, pothole crews are still out daily to address problematic areas. And if there's potholes in your area, please call six seven 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 nine seven zero, and it'll be looked after. Commercial, community cleanup day, two hundred and eighty bags of garbage, the city gave out eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and that was pretty good for the type of day it was, it was pretty cold and wet that day. The community cleanup waste disposal ground, three hundred and seventy-five loads were brought to the waste disposal ground on the, that weekend. Street sweeping downtown Thompson Drive, Cree Road, Princeton Drive, Juniper areas are all complete. They're working on the other areas as we speak, outdoor area attendance has started, the main focus is in the downtown area. Sanitary main flushing and storm sewer main flushing programs have started. Water utility operational highlights, water main repairs from March to May, there was seventeen, service breaks seven, hydrant repairs seven, storm mains one. Waste water treatment plant, the foundation walls have been finished, mechanical contractor mobilized to the site. Concrete works are going in progress for slabs and beams. Pre-cast slab fabrication is in project, progress, Cree Road lift station has been installed, close to fifty percent of the work is completed in terms of construction cost. Water main twenty eighteen, the project was tendered and awarded to Accurate HD. Tender came in above budget, Steghorn area was taken out to fit in the tender. BT's Burnford trailer cord drainage phase two, phase two drainage works were tendered out and awarded to Smook Contractor Limited. Road renewal twenty eighteen, project was tendered out and awarded to Maple Leaf, project includes, install, milling of station road and installation of multi-use path from Highland Towers to Nelson Road. Air conditioning unit repairs, design of project was done by Performa engineers, and the project has been tendered. Leachate study and monitoring wells at the waste disposal ground, the project was tendered out and awarded to Tetra Tech, project is to start in June. Funding for phase three water main works was applied with the Water Services Board. Water treatment plant, IPS is installing the reporting system in the water treatment plant, it is near completion, need a few changes. Valet is to be, to be made in order to run it properly. Thank you.
Report? Yes, Council Valentino.
Mr. McLean or Deputy Mayor Smook, but I just thought of this with your, um, report on the two shifts for the snow clearing, the May eleventh end date. Is that a hard date, or does that go year by year based on the weather conditions? So, my other question is, does it cost us money having those two shifts? Like, or is it cost savings if it ends earlier or later in the year?
If it ends earlier in the year, our, our focus shifts to other projects if the, if the, the snow is gone, so.
Receive information, thank you. We're now into correspondence, we have a letter from Dave Dyson, Deputy Minister, Growth Enterprise and Trade, in response to our letter of May third, two thousand and eighteen, regarding the Mining Community Reserve Fund. This is to Mayor Fenske, on behalf of the Honorable Blaine Peterson, Minister of Growth Enterprise and Trade, thank you for your letter of May third, two thousand and eighteen, regarding the Mining Community Reserve Fund, MCRF, I am pleased to respond on his behalf. I appreciate, appreciate the dedication you have demonstrated for your community, in the meetings you have had with our department regarding the MCRF, with the Minister, January third, two thousand and eighteen, Deputy Minister and Assistant Deputy Minister, February sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Deputy Minister, Jan, or March twenty ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and Minister on April third, two thousand and eighteen. We regret to inform you that we are unable to access the MCRF at this time, the legislation guiding the use of the MCRF needs to ensure its sustainability, and the fund is only used if the balance is at least ten million dollars, the fund does not currently meet that threshold. Thank you again for your letter, we look forward to your, our continued work with your community to support the further development of a strong northern economy through initiatives such as Look North, sincerely, Dave Dyson, Deputy Minister, Growth Enterprise and Trade. Look to council for comments. Council Valentino.
Come, I mean, obviously, it's not a good thing they're saying there's no money in the fund, but I also look at it as a bit of a positive thing that we're getting some responses now, and I think it's because we've been advocating January third, February sixteenth, March twenty ninth, April third, April third. So we're getting replies back, they're listening, I think, we've caused a little bit of noise, so I look at that as a good thing, and that we have to continue. We have to continue advocating, so now where did the money go? But we have to continue to work hard with the province and ask more questions about this, because in a positive manner, we're getting some reply back now. I know our local media has certainly done their due diligence and is working hard also, so I take it as a little bit more, we've got to keep working towards it and advocate more.
Council Ellis.
Working and advocating on our behalf, I look at the, the name of this fund, the, the ended up a community reserve fund. And community is the second, the second word in, in this title, and I think in the past, Lynn Lake and Leaf Rapids and Snow Lake have received funding from this fund, and yet when Thompson's, and Thompson has never received funding from this fund, and has never asked. But when we do ask, we are, we are turned down, and this is probably the fourth reason why we, why we've been turned down. They've, they've given, it's been a moving target. You know, I, I'm disappointed in the provincial government, I'm disappointed in our MLA, who sits on the government benches. You know, Tom, you know, and Thompson needs, needs a little bit of assistance, and we give them a four-year plan, and, and, and we get a flat no. I don't, I don't think that's, that's uncalled for.
Thank you, other questions or comments? If Council would indulge, I'd like to make a few comments, first of all, I want to thank, as Council Valentino has pointed out, I want to thank the local media and Mr. Ellsworth in regards to, in his role as a local six one, six six president, in the lobbying effort that's happened over the last year with the, the mining reserve fund. It's unfortunate that, that it's come to these kind of comments that are being made in the press on this very important issue of the mining reserve fund and the current economic situation that we find ourselves in in regards to the, the Grant and Lew reductions and, and others. So, just to briefly answer a few questions that were asked in regards to planning, or did we, have we done any planning, have we done any short-term planning or long-term planning? I want to bring council and the general public back to two thousand and ten, when the announcement was made by valet that they were going to a mine mill operation and reducing the workforce by five hundred. At the same time, the valet provided two point five million dollars to start the TEDWIC process, Thompson Economic Development Working Group. It was, had a lot of partners, including the province of Manitoba, to look at the sustainability of our community. And it had a very distinct plan in looking at the long-term plan of, of our community. And as a result, there were a number of initiatives that, that came out of it. The main document was the Thompson Economic Diversification Plan, that was tabled in June of two thousand and thirteen. And it had two areas of priority, one in the regulatory framework, which means regulations or protocols that we had in place that could be improved on, that would help us be sustainable and move the process forward. Lay included Thompson and Regional Infrastructure Plan, the Development Plan and the Zoning Bylaw, and the Sustainable Asset Management Plan. Out of the process, we also identified, the TEDWIC process identified action plans in five specific areas, that included restorative justice, an actual bricks and mortar facility, to deal with social issues in the north, uh, overloading in our penal system, both federally and provincially, and the transfer of prisoners from Thompson to the Paw, Dauphin, Winnipeg. We also dealt with housing, the extreme lack of affordable housing in our community, poverty, extreme lack of housing for those in need. Out of that came ninety-five Cree Road, the damp house, based on a model in Prince Albert, to assist those in need with social addictions and mental health issues from housing. Also affordable housing in regards to lobbying for more affordable housing in our community, increasing the inventory. In education and training, what Thompson twenty twenty, or Thompson twenty, uh, talked tonight about the working group and the workforce development is a byproduct of the Industrial Skills and Trades Trade Center, that was announced by the previous government for this community, based at the high school, which was subsequently shelved by the province of Manitoba upon election. We also lobbied hard and were successful in creating a new campus for UCN, with the goal of having a thousand students by twenty twenty. We're well on our way to, to achieving that, that was an eighty-two million dollar investment in our community. We also had the Ecole de Nord built, uh, to satisfy the French component of our community that wanted a totally immersed school. And so that was an investment in our infrastructure, our education infrastructure. Economic development, Thompson twenty twenty talked about this year alone, a hundred and sixty million dollars in investment, based on previous work of TEDWIC, Thompson twenty twenty, the business community and the community at large, and this council and previous council, doing initiatives. For this council, initiatives like reducing the business tax in each of our budget years, like bringing forth the tax abatement by law, which allows investors to reinvest in their current business, if they own the property, or for new businesses to come in and see an abatement in their taxes based on assessment over three to five years, depending on the amount of investment. We also see industry valet as, uh, making the announcement of the changing to the mine mill operation, but yet investing sixty million dollars in exploration and mine development, and also in the, in the loadout facility, which last weekend moved its, and produced its first filter cake for the product that will be moved to, to Sudbury moving forward. A hundred and sixty million dollars this year. Private industry, government, investing in our community, when it seems like, as was said by Thompson twenty, we're becoming a ghost town, that's not the case. The other area in the TEDWIC program was local, uh, local and regional identity, the place branding strategy. We've moved on some of those initiatives, we've got a ways to go with that, but we've, we've moved on that, and we're also working in concert with Tourism Manitoba in their destination place branding strategy. Tourism is, is growing, we have the, the Oral Discovery Center moving along. We've got outfitters, we've got a new outfit at Saskatoon Rapids, expanding their tourism. We've got local initiatives for tourism initiatives. And so we are moving forward. This information was all relayed to the province of Manitoba in a package that outlined what the city of Thompson had done since the announcement in two thousand and ten. the city of Thompson had done since the announcement in 2010. That this government said we did nothing to date to plan for this event. I take great exception to that, and on behalf of all those that worked behind the scenes, I take exception for them because all of their work was not undone. We have $160 million being invested this summer alone in our community based on that work, and for the province of Manitoba to say that we've done nothing and it's our fault we're in our situation is ludicrous, and I will address this with Minister Pedersen, who has finally received and accepted a meeting request for next Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. in Winnipeg. Rest assured, his words that were on the press today and on the radio today, that again, Thompson did not plan for this event, will be brought up, as will the information provided to his office months ago, as a history of what Thompson 2020 and TEDWIC has done since This community should be tired of constantly be told we're not good enough. This community should be tired, not about our local media, but other media, when we have the biggest games in Manitoba, the biggest event in Manitoba, not one media from outside of Thompson comes north. We should be offended. We're all Manitobans, and if you draw a line, I drove up this morning north of 53, you draw a line at north of 53 and took every piece of economic development north of that 53, where would the province be? No hydro, no mines, no forestry, they'd be left with agriculture. Good luck with that. So again, to answer the question that was asked by us last week, did we present a plan? You're damn right we did. The short term was exact answer to the GIL cuts we saw. We saw a GIL cut 20% in the first year, from $6 million to 4.8. We saw 50% cut the second year to $3 million with a rider that if Valet makes 60 million U.S. cash flow positive, they'll give us a 1.2 back, up to 4.2. In year three, 20 million, sorry, $20 million U.S., in year three, $3 million down from six. In year four, $3 million down from year six million. This council decided to take 4.8 that they provided in the first year and take all of it and not to share it with the school district and the LGD. Difficult discussion, difficult talk, but we have to look at the city first, and we made that decision. So in this year, we're not hurt by the GIL because we'll get our 4.2, and we'll take that extra 600 and spread it over the next three years for the next council to soften the blow because they can experience a million dollar loss over the next three years. Possibly not next year if Valet has a good year, but definitely in the third and fourth year, they will experience a million point two loss in GIL revenue. So the ask to the province of Manitoba from the Mining Reserve Fund was for $100,000 this year for economic development, which history shows, thanks to the media doing their homework and showing what was spent over the last number of years in the Mining Reserve Fund, that Lynn Lake received funding, that Leaf Rapids received funding, that Snow Lake received funding. We asked for $100,000 this year. We asked for $1 million in the next three years to offset the GIL loss. The response wasn't good. They didn't want to cover operating costs, but that was the ask, that's the short term because that was, that's what faced us. Can we plan beyond four years? No, we don't have a Grant and Lou beyond four years. How can you, how can you plan on a minimum amount at this point, that's 4.8333, when you have zero in year five? At this point, you have zero. How can you plan anything? How can the province expect us to plan based on that? We don't have a GIL past four years from now. So again, I take exception to those comments where there was a short-term plan, it wasn't acceptable, and they're not funding short-term plans, they're looking at long-term. Okay, well, let's look at long-term. Let's look at the restorative justice facility that's been between before, two justice ministers in the previous government, and this justice minister of this government. Zero response. Zero. It creates jobs, it deals with a social issue, it's where it should be in northern Manitoba. Let's talk about Main Street North. Everybody talks about the shelter, the downtown social issue in Thompson. We have a plan, we had a plan eight years ago when I started on this council. We wanted to model the Main Street program that's held in Winnipeg. We want to take that model and bring it north. One facility provides housing, provides social support for mental illness, for addictions, provides overnight sleeping accommodations for those who are under the influence. Rather than in a jail cell, they're in a holding cell, they're not in the system, they're not in the police system, which drives up our crime severity index by four, over 4,000 a year going through the cells. Takes them out of the circulation, just like it does in Winnipeg. Response, zero, none. Housing, we talked about Manitoba housing. Prior to the election, there was a housing project on Cree Road next to the fast gas that was slated for, to tear down that existing building and rebuild it. Current government put that on mothballs. They're not moving forward at this point. How is that dealing with our housing issue in Thompson? They asked about operating costs. How can we assist in reducing your operating costs? Well, for one, we pay $161,000 in social assistance, highest in the province. It's provincial responsibility, we pay $161,000. Don't send an invoice, pay the 161. How about the $240,000 that you just passed on and commissioners that work at the Public Safety Building for cells that aren't all Thompsonites? They've downloaded a cost of $240,000 to us. How is that helping our economy? So again, hard questions to ask, hard statements to take when they're made not directly to me in a private meeting, but through the media or through another meeting with another agency and relayed third-party. So why am I upset? Damn right I am. Is this council upset? They should be. Is the community upset? We should be because we're not a have-not community. We provide a lot to this province of Manitoba, a lot, and it's about time somebody came back to us and said, "Thanks, you're in tough times, we're here to help you out." So we'll see what happens on Tuesday. Thank you. Next letter from Scott Sinclair, Associate Deputy Minister, Minister of Manitoba Finance, in response to our letter regarding request proposal for management of provincial air services. Dear Mayor Fenske, thank you for your letter respecting requests proposals, RFPs regarding the management of provincial air services. Finance was the lead department in this first stage of this process and therefore been copied on your correspondence with the Honorable Ron R. Schuler, Minister of Infrastructure. Third-party aviation experts have engaged to help government review options for the delivery of air services, a result of the government's value for money audit that indicated that the current method of air service delivered could potentially be enhanced and improve value for money. It's critical to government to ensure any alternative operation of air services can be delivered with at least the same level of service, if not better than the current service levels. This, I believe, is consistent with your stated priorities to maintain services and ensure the safety of your community in the region. If government is not assured of this, we will not proceed with changes. Government officials representing health, sustainable development, justice, and those involved in wildflower management are involved in setting the standards for the service requirements and evaluating proposed options to ensure our shared goals are met. In addition, we will be involved, legal experts, to confirm this through contract terms. Thank you again for writing and allowing me to opportunity, the opportunity to respond to your concerns. Yours sincerely, Scott Sinclair, Associate Deputy Minister, Finance. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we'll receive for information. We're now going into resolutions. We have a resolution, 8.1, a resolution to appoint the city manager. Resolution 2018146, moved by Counsel Byer, second by Counsel Ellis. Be resolved, the council appoints Anthony McGinnis as the city manager for the city of Thompson effective Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. Go to the administration for support.
Just dedicate that this is sort of the formal acceptance of the selection process that has been going on for the last number of months of which council has been involved in throughout the process.
Thank you. I'll go to the mover, Counsel Byer.
I'd just say I'm extremely pleased with the process, extremely pleased with the candidates, and extremely pleased that Anthony McGinnis accepted the offer, and I look forward to a very positive and vibrant time with the city when he takes over the reins.
Thank you, counsel. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Els?
I just, we, as chair of the selection committee, we've gone through an extensive process. Just like to thank the committee as well as our Human Resources Director, Deanna Conicore, as well as city council. I think, we believe we had 10 meetings in all in terms of our selection committee. Anthony comes to us from, or is coming up from Community Development Services within the city of Thompson. He's a Thompsonite, comes from us from Northern Affairs, well-versed with the community. I'm extremely pleased to have him on board, and yeah, I recommend.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Counsel Valentino?
Just for the public information, there was a committee, a hiring committee, but all the meetings were open to council, so you were always welcome to be a part of it. So I know I joined in a few times, and I learned a lot through the process, and I think our HR department administration led the very professional recruiting process, and definitely was a learning experience for me, and I think it was a good person chosen.
Deputy Mayor Smoke?
Yes, as part of that committee, we did our due diligence, and we had many applicants. It was sort of overwhelming, and thank you to Deanna for helping us lead, and our selection of Anthony as a hometown boy is the right choice.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counsel Calada?
Yes, I think we're lucky to get someone with Anthony's skills, but it's also lucky for the city that he's familiar with our organization and that he lives here. We don't have to import him from some other place, and it's less of a learning curve for him, and I'm, I've been extremely impressed with his work on development review, having been part of that committee, so I'm very happy about the selection. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Just before I put you on the spot, Anthony, I wanted to say on behalf of the city council, Gary's not leaving us until the fall, so there's an opportunity, and that, the committee certainly looked at that, and we wanted to take advantage of that, and we want to thank Gary for providing this timeframe, to provide the mentorship that he will provide to Anthony over the timeframe till he takes his full-time role. So I want to recognize Gary in that aspect, and with that, I'm going to go to Anthony, and if you have anything to add.
I'd like to thank the council for putting their trust in me, and I'm looking forward to the challenge.
Favor. It's carried unanimously, thank you. Next, we have 8.2, a resolution to approve the subdivision of application for lot, or one lot, part of parcel A, plan number 6161 PLTO, end division, and part of Footprint Road, plan number 52664 PLTO. We have a memo from the Director of Development Services, a memo from Community Planner, and a map. The resolution reads 2018147, moved by Counsel Byer, second by Counsel Ellis. Whereas the city of Thompson has been advised of a proposed subdivision application submitted by Trail Breakers Snowmobile Club is to subdivide one lot from parcel, part of parcel A, plan number 6161 PLTO, end division, and part of Footprint Road, plan number 52664 PLTO. And whereas the city of Thompson has reviewed the application and has no concerns, now therefore be resolved that the city of Thompson advise municipal relations, community, and regional planning branch that it approves the proposed subdivision. Go to administration for support. Anthony?
I want to say that this was a addition that was set by council under previous resolutions. It's noted in the memo from the urban planner that there's a subdivision has been circulated to the relevant government departments, and there are no concerns noted, so they recommend we bring it forward for a resolution.
The mover, Counsel Byer.
This has been discussed at DRC, I think, several times. It's been a lengthy process, and I see this as a housekeeping item, and of course, I'll be supporting it.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. 8.3, a resolution to approve the offer between the Manitoba Water Services Board and the city of Thompson respecting Phase 3 and 4 of the water and sewer renewal. We have the cost-sharing agreements, Manitoba Water Services Board and the city of Thompson, and we have a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution reads 2018148, moved by Counsel Calada, second by Counsel Byer. Whereas the Manitoba Water Services Board, MWSB, provides funding and technical assistance to municipalities across Manitoba to complete water and sanitary projects, and whereas on May 7th, 2018, council passed Resolution 2018123 requesting access to monies from the MWSB in the amount of $250,000 for the engineering and design of Phase 3 water and sanitary main renewals and wrap-up phase of Phase 1, and whereas on May 22nd, council passes Resolution 2018136 formally requesting technical and financial assistance from the MWSB for Phase 3 of the water and sanitary main renewal project, and whereas prior to the MWSB engaging project, engineers of Phase 3 work on behalf of the city, the city must enter into an agreement with the Manitoba Water Services Board. Now therefore be resolved, the council accept the offer between Manitoba Water Services Board and the city of Thompson respecting Phase 3 and 4 water and sewer renewals in the city of Thompson. Go to administration for support. Anthony?
I want to say that this is the third step. In the process, we had the two previous resolutions, and it's a standard agreement that's prepared by the Manitoba Water Services Board to support our ongoing water and sewer renewals.
Thank you. Counsel Calada is the mover. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor, carried unanimously, thank you. Next, we have 8.4, a resolution to approve the drug and alcohol policy, and we have a memo from the Human Resource Manager and the drug and alcohol policy. Resolution 2018149, moved by Counsel Ellis, second by Counsel Byer. Be resolved, the council approve the drug and alcohol policy. Go to administration for support. Anything to add? Deanna?
Administration and HR and council, in terms of the HR committee, have been working over the last few months on two policies. The first one I'm going to speak about very briefly is the drug and alcohol policy. We've developed a policy that is a new policy, prudent in responsibility of the employer to ensure the standards and expectations are clear of all of our employees when it comes to drugs and alcohol. The policy itself outlines standards, procedures for suspected impairment, resources for employees, including accommodation under Human Rights Code. So this is a brand-new policy that's come forth. It's been developed in collaboration with both firefighters and United Steelworkers Unions, and has gone through the HR committee. The recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution approving this policy.
Mover, Counsel Ellis?
This has been reviewed by the Human Resources Committee. This is also in response to the pending legalization of cannabis.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor, it's carried unanimously, thank you. Now we have 8.5, a resolution to approve the amendments to the Code of Ethics Policy, and we have the Code of Conduct for Employees Policy. Resolution 2018150, moved by Counsel Ellis, second by Counsel Byer. Be resolved, the council approve the amended Code of Ethics Policy and rename it the Code of Conduct for Employees Policy. Go to administration for support. Anything?
This is the second policy that's been under treatment for review by the HR committee as well. This one has gone through a collaborative process with both union groups. The existing Code of Ethics Policy specifically referenced only ethics, and we revised the policy to be a more global Code of Conduct that outlines some of our general employment rules as well when it comes to fit for duty and some of the acceptable and non-acceptable behaviors in terms of, in our workplace. So when it comes to the revised Code of Ethics Policy, it is the cornerstone policy for human resources. All of our employees are oriented in this policy and required to sign off on it, so it is a very well-used document, and I think that the recommendations to change it to a more global Code of Conduct to include ethics as a portion meets the city's needs in a better way.
Thank you. Go to the mover, Counsel Els.
This again was reviewed by the Human Resources Committee and is recommended. This policy was last revised in 2012, and it broadens the scope as was said.
Counsel, any questions? Counsel Madja?
The only thing I don't like about it is the removal of that word "ethics." I think there should be a lot less of that done because almost everywhere that the Code of Ethics was mentioned, it was replaced with conduct, and ethics are an important part of what we do.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor, carried unanimously, thank you. Next, we have 8.6, a resolution to approve the attendance at the Thompson 2020 Investors' Breakfast Meeting, and we have a memo from the executive assistants. Resolution 2018151, moved by Counsel Valentino, second by Counsel Byer. Be resolved, the council approve the attendance of Mayor Fenske at the Thompson 2020 Investors' Breakfast Meeting in Winnipeg, Manitoba on June 26th, 2018. Be further resolved that the attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. Go to administration for support.
Just dedicate this corresponding memo from the executive assistant, and the cost of the mayor to attend this event is approximately $855.
Thank you. Go to the mover, Counsel Els.
Go to the mover, Council Valentino.
Obviously from the presentation today from Thompson twenty twenty, I'll be bringing this. I think it's great and I look forward to an actual quick summary of how this meeting went next week.
Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Council Kalata, did you vote? I'm sorry, let's do it again. All in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
Next, we have the resolution to approve attendance at the Provincial Municipal Justice Advisory Committee and we have a memo executive, from the Executive Assistant. Resolution two zero one eight one five two, moved by Council Byer, second by Council Valentino. Be resolved, the council approve the attendance of Mayor Fenske at the Provincial Municipal Justice Advisory Committee in Winnipeg, Manitoba on July sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Further resolved, the attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw eighteen ninety seven dash two zero one three.
Go to administration for support.
As well, the corresponding member, it's the cost of this travel is seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and that the city of Thompson will receive reimbursement from AMM for these above-mentioned costs.
The mover, Council Byer.
I will be supporting this. Mayor Fenske has an excellent reputation for his work on that advisory committee and he's also a strong advocate for Thompson and policing as we heard earlier as well, also for our restorative justice facility. So he works on all fronts when he is down south.
Thank you. And council, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the May check registers and we have the May check registers attached. Resolution two zero one eight one five three, moved by Council Valentino, second by Council Byer. Check register dated May two thousand and eighteen, general accounts payable checks totaling one million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. Payroll dated May eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and twelve cents. Payroll dated May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and forty-nine cents for a subtotal of five hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents for a grand total of two million, two hundred and seventy-two dollars, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty cents. The accounts contained in this check register have been reviewed by the Members of Finance and Administration Committee. Go to administration for support.
Jen? Nothing? Mover, Council Valentino.
I just, this was discussed and reviewed on Monday, June eleventh, at the Finance and Admin Committee Meeting. We have been meeting regularly every two weeks and it was brought forth for the agenda at the Liga Meeting on Wednesday, June thirteenth with an email to council for any questions at that time.
Questions, council? Council Madzuk.
I have a question on one of the checks on the register and that is check number zero zero two six seven four two, wrote out to Community Futures North Central Development. The usual amount on the check register for them is, I believe, seventy-one hundred and seventy-four or seventy-one hundred and seventy-five dollars and this one is seventy-nine eighty-one, which is an increase of approximately eight hundred dollars. I'm just wondering why the difference?
Mr. Sepatelli.
It's the combination of, or the allowance from the province for admin costs to be associated with eligible costs.
Any other questions? Council Kalata.
We've had several discussions on the check register and it appears that it's irrelevant to have a resolution. It's not a requirement, so why are we continuing to have resolutions on the check register?
It's been referred back to finance as per our in-camera meeting and so we'll discuss further at the finance meeting and hopefully the recommendation will come forward to no longer continue with resolutions for...
Finance meeting is July sixth.
July the sixth. Mr. Sepatelli.
Just indicated, obviously if there's a willingness of council sort of to undertake that change, which has been identified by Council Kalata, the intent would still to bring the check registers to council on a regular basis, but really sort of approach it sort of under the report section where a resolution is not required.
Council Valentino.
Clarify that, council. July ninth. I made a mistake, sorry.
To the public, it's at noon at City Hall. Other questions? Council Wong.
I personally, I don't like the changes, but it is what it is. The reason I'm saying that is we are, we want to practice more transparency, but the only time that people can understand how we spend the money, this is the way we ask the question. So when you're doing that kind of way...
There's not, no debate on regards to whether we do or we don't. It's been referred to finance as directed in the previous meeting and so the questions today should be related to the check register that we have before us. Are there any questions regarding...
We'll be the, we are come to the end now, so the next council and mayor might not like that way, they might change it, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the condenser replacement for the air conditioning system in City Hall. Tabulation of prices, condenser replacement, air conditioning system at City Hall is attached. Resolution two zero one eight one five four, moved by Council Byer, second by Council Foley. Be resolved, the council approve the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the tender for the condenser replacement for the air conditioning system in City Hall to Simco Refrigeration for their tender price of one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. All taxes included as per tender file number one one eight one eight.
Go to administration for support. Anything to add?
Don't be rude.
Thank you. Go to the mover, Council Byer.
I'll be supporting this although given how cold it is in here tonight, I'm not so sure we really need it anymore. That is a joke.
Any questions? Call for the question. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Council Wong.
Thank you. What is the main reason we need to change this system? Is it because of the pressure?
There's two reasons that administrations recommending the change. One major reason is the water pressure in the building, that when all three systems are running, two, in the past, only two systems were running. Previous council or in the past authorized assets and infrastructure to do a repair on the third condenser. When that repair was done, there's insufficient pressure in the building to run the air conditioners and flush the toilets. So basically it becomes a choice between sanitation or air conditioning. So even for, say, this evening, air conditioning is turned off in the basement of the building so that we can accommodate cooling upstairs. So that's one reason. The other reason is the life of the system is pretty much reaches end according to what the engineers have assessed. I guess there's a third reason, the quantity of water that's being used. It's a single pass system, uses potable drinking water for cooling, once and it goes down the drain. So it's also environmentally unsustainable.
My other question is have we hired a plumber to look into some sort of depressurize the water when you have, if you install the equalized wealth, you probably will take care of the pressure? Have you looked into that part yet?
We didn't explore that as an option. The reason that we went for a replacement is based on the water usages, the numbers are so high that we wanted to reduce those numbers too as a cost to the city as well as our engineers' assessments figure that we have three, maybe five years left on the condensers that are there. So they thought if we were to put any more money into keeping it running, there's potential for it to fail.
Question, the... Yeah, just for the, I mean, obviously is to answer Council Wong's question. Obviously this, the issue with the air conditioning in City Hall has been a longstanding issue of which this council, in the four years that they've been here, have obviously made mention of the issue. It was an issue with the previous council as well and likely councils before that. I think that the, the systems that were put into place back in the mid-seventies when this building was constructed were efficient, but over time, I mean, the efficiency of the systems has deteriorated substantially. We've had plumbers come in to take a look at whether that there's various ways that you can reroute to address some of the pressure issues and also had an engineering company sort of take a look at the system and make recommendations as to sort of what the most efficient and best way for us as a, as an organization to proceed forward and obviously is what is before council tonight is the approval of that tender of which this project has been discussed as part of the budget process.
Council Wong.
Or refer to your third reason, we're using a lot of water for cooling the system. I'm speaking on, based on experience, not based on what I think. So all you have to do, just install the, what you call the, the system that you can eliminate the water keep floating, only when you, also run by the pressure as well. When the compressor kicks in, the water start going through the coil to cool down. When the compressor is not running, the water will not go through, it's not going to go waste. Another thing I want to point it out is like, we just spent almost thirty thousand dollars to upgrade today and between a year, we're going to spend another hundred thousand dollars. To me, this is what I'm having a problem with.
Anthony?
Yeah, this system that's currently in place does what you just described, that when the cooling system is on, the water is running through and when the cooling system is off or not required, the water stops. So it currently does function that way.
Any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the purchase of compact truck loader. We have the tabulation of prices and we have a memo from the Director of Recreation Parks and Culture. Resolution two zero one eight one five five, moved by Council Foley, second by Council Byer. Be resolved, the council approve the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the tender for the purchase of compact truck loader to Duron Equipment Inc. for their tender price of seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. All taxes included as per tender file number one one nine one eight. Go to administration for support.
Anything to add? Good, thank you. Mover, Council Foley. Council, any questions? Council Madzuk.
It states in our information that the lowest tender was rejected due to ground clearance. Was that ground clearance specified in the contract?
Do we have the answer to that? Mr. Sepatelli?
You said the thing, frame like they called it, I'm assuming that there's a number of specs that the, the lowest bid did not meet and because they didn't meet all the specs that were in the, in the tender, they were disqualified. That may have been one of them.
Any other questions? Council Wong.
But we have a caterpillar dealer here, so would it be better for us to have that product to get services?
You're suggesting sole sourcing to purchase?
There's two reasons. One is that the bid is lower, number two, we have a dealer here. So would it be better for us for like a mobilization? Let's say the machine down, we have to send it to Winnipeg to repair. That costs in the future, what I'm saying.
As indicated, the tender puts forth a number of specifications that we asked for when we're tending for this piece of equipment. The lowest tender did not meet all the specifications. As they did not meet all the specifications, they were disqualified. The second lowest bid obviously was Duron Equipment, met all the specifications, plus the fact is that we have a number of pieces of that brand name in our fleet, which also has a number of the attachments in there. So really is the specifications that were, they met all the specifications and even though that they weren't the lowest, the lowest did not meet all the specifications and were disqualified. That's part of our tendering process.
Any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you.
Now we have a resolution to approve the sole sourcing with Maple Leaf Construction Limited to, for additional roadwork. We have a memo from the Director of Development Services and a map of roadwork. Resolution two zero one eight one five six, moved by Council Foley, second by Council Byer. Whereas on April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, council passed resolution number two zero one eight one oh six, awarding the tender of the two thousand and eighteen road renewals and multi-use path project to Maple Leaf Construction Limited. And whereas since the tender came in under budget, the asset and infrastructure group was tasked with identifying potential additional road renewals throughout the city of Thompson and are as follows. Weir Road, Hayes Road into intersection, intersection of Thompson Drive, Public Lane by Lakeview Inn and Suites, Thompson Drive north of, by Beaver Crescent, curb lane on eastbound lane, Westwood Drive near Arctic Drive to Partridge Crescent, Princeton Drive, Waterloo Avenue intersection, Thompson Drive by Tim Hortons East approached curb lane only, Spruce Road by Juniper Park. Whereas on April tenth, two thousand and ten, or sorry, April tenth, two thousand and seventeen, council passed resolution number two seventeen zero nine seven, awarding the two thousand and seventeen road reconstruction and paving project to Maple Leaf Construction for one million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-three thousand and forty-five cents. All applicable taxes included as per tender file number one zero six one seven. Now therefore be resolved, the council sole source the additional roadworks at a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Maple Leaf Construction Limited. Go to administration for support.
Anthony?
That the department will be following the costs as they're going for the additional work and will cut off the work once it gets close to the authorization we're asking from council.
Go to the mover, or sorry, Mr. Sepatelli.
Just indicated as well, I mean, obviously as our major capital projects, there are provisions in the contract that allow for additional works, but in order to sort of approve those additional works, obviously the city goes through a process for this specific resolution that comes forth to sole source to Maple Leaf who was awarded a paving contract has gone to both the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee and the Finance and Admin Committee for consensus to bring this forth to council for approval.
Thank you. Go to the mover, Council Foley. Anything to add? Council, any questions? Council Madzuk.
I'm just wondering if the drawings are to spec because from what I see of the first drawing, which is Weir Road, the, the drawing cuts off at the west end of Normand Glass Building, which would actually only take care of approximately half of Weir, Weir Road, what we call the minefield. It doesn't cover it all.
As part of the process, I was identified by administration was getting a linear sort of distance on each one of the ones. Really the, the maps that are shown from council are for representative purposes, but I mean, obviously that, that detailed information can be sent to council.
Any other questions, council? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you.
Next, we have a resolution to approve sole sourcing with Smoke Contractors Limited for additional work at, on the Burntwood Trailer Court drainage. Resolution two zero one eight one five seven, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, second by Council Byer. Whereas on April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, council passed resolution number two zero one eight zero nine six, awarding the tender for the two thousand and eighteen Burntwood Trailer Court drainage project to Smoke Contractors. And whereas since the tender came in under budget and the asset and infrastructure group was tasked with identifying potential additional drainage works in the Burntwood Trailer Court, now therefore be resolved, the council sole source the additional drainage works in the Burntwood Trailer Court at no, at a cost not to exceed a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars plus applicable taxes to Smoke Contractors Limited.
Go to administration for support. Anthony?
On the original tender, Smoak was the only bidder. It came in under budget and moving forward with this additional work will accelerate the program of renewal.
Mr. Sepatelli.
And additionally, comments that this issue was discussed both at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee and the Finance and Admin Committee with consensus to bring it forth to council tonight for approval.
Thank you. Go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak.
I think this is a positive thing for... We've been slowly working on it, especially during our term, time over the councils so that eventually that all the drainage issues can be solved over a number of years and then maybe we can do the paving program.
Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you.
And we have a resolution to approve the two thousand and eighteen municipal road program. We have a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution two zero one eight one five eight, moved by Council Byer, second by Deputy Mayor Smoak. Whereas it's deemed necessary for the city Thompson to undertake improvement in construction on municipal roads in two thousand and eighteen. Whereas Manitoba Municipal Relations has announced that a municipal road and bridge program that provides for fifty percent funding for municipal road and bridge renewal projects. Therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Thompson requests Manitoba Municipal Relations provide the city fifty percent of the following work, station road and additional road replacements of one million, seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Fifty percent of the project amount is five hundred and eight thousand and five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Go to administration for support.
Mr. Sepatelli.
Yeah, so this is, the municipal road and bridge program has been a program that's been in existence for a number of years where the province of Manitoba under a former government amalgamated a number of, of programs and renamed it the municipal road and bridge program. And it's based on criteria of population and the city's population is, were eligible for up to four hundred thousand dollars as part of, as part of this program from a grant from the, from the province of Manitoba. Council has consistently identified this funding source as part of our paving program over the last number of years when this, this program was announced by the province of Manitoba. The previous values on an annual basis are substantially higher than the two thousand and eighteen announcement that was just made on Thursday. Municipalities have to submit applications by July the sixth with an accompanying resolution Municipalities have to submit applications by July the 6th with an accompanying resolution as, as to why the resolution is before council tonight. My concern is, is that the, the values that the province is putting forth for this program is $2.25 million, where previous programs' values were in the $14 to $16 million. So there, there's a considerable drop in that, and I mean, that's a concern, and I would sort of make the direction that a letter from the mayor should go to the Minister of Municipal Relations in regards to this program.
Thank you.
I'll go to the mover, Counsel Byer.
I certainly support the resolution. I think it's no surprise to anybody, or won't surprise anybody, that Station Road is in pretty bad shape and, and greatly needs the, the replacement. And I am also encouraged that Mayor Fenske will be addressing the reduction that, and the amount that's going to roads and bridges through infrastructure.
Counsel, any questions? Deputy Mayor Smook.
Yes, I guess one of my concerns with this is we're now middle of June, and we were just able to apply for these grants. We have to have our programs in place in the mid-winter, and yet we don't get to apply for the money. So basically, we're at a juggling act until we, and then even now, the money's been cut, we don't know what we'll get. So again, the government has to wake up and listen to us.
Counsel Madichuk.
My concern is that we didn't, didn't recognize this street as a candidate for the milling, because that street does not have any rutting at all. It has frost heaves, but no rutting. It's a good, solid road right now, underneath the asphalt, and I think we could have saved a bit of money there.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie D. National, thank you. Now moving into the mayor's report for June 5 to the 18th, 2018. Along with administration, I met with the RCMP and along with council members and the city manager Gary Seppertelli, attended the AMM Northern June District Meeting via conference call on June, June 7. Counselor Byer attended on our behalf in Churchill. Along with Director of Development Services, Anthony McGinnis, met with Curtis Stolth and Brett O'Meara on June 8 regarding social issues downtown. Attended and brought greetings at the Smelter and Refinery Employee Event on June 9 in regards to the closure of the Smelter Refinery at the end of July. Along with administration, met with a number of agencies, business owners, mall managers, and security company on June 12 in regards to social issues downtown. The bi-weekly Thompson 2020 conference calls continue. The water treatment plant meetings are held on a quarterly basis. Various committee meetings were held, including Finance and Admin, Public Works and Infrastructure, Communications and Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs. There are no proclamations at this time. The community cleanup continues. Activity's still ongoing. The waste disposal grounds are open Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Open May 5 to October 27. Community, Clean Community Month is May 22 to June 25. You can call Public Works at 677-7970 for more details. Compost site, grass kippings, and leaves are open 24/7 beside the Public Works yard. The Business Challenge was held on June 1, and we spoke together already about the $3 bag fundraising opportunities, and again, take part in our annual community cleanup, spring cleanup to help Thompson be clean and beautiful. With that, I'll go to council members to report on any other activities. Counselor Valentino.
I attended the UCN grad on June 7 at TRCC on behalf of the city. And Chancellor Edwin Ross, in his remarks, spoke about the open arms that the city of Thompson has with UCN, so I think we have a very good relationship there. They put a lot of graduates across that stage, and that is the first-class ran ceremony, that's for sure. So I was proud to be a part of that.
Other counselors? Counselor Byer.
You already mentioned the Northern District Meeting in Churchill. I, I did something that wasn't really representing the city on an official basis, but a former president of, it was then INCO, was visiting Thompson, Mel Wyszynski, and he asked to be toured around, and it was such a pleasure to take him to all of the new facilities that we have, including the TRAA, UCN, the, the new French School, and also, he was quite interested in Lyons Manor 55. But also to be able to talk about the changes that are coming. It's really nice to be able to brag about your city, and he was very impressed with how we've come along and where we're going in the next little while.
Yes, I wanted to report briefly on the FCM. I had more than one full notebook of notes, but I, I assume that you and Gary have done some reporting, so I, I missed the last meeting, so I'll just indicate that it was the largest municipal, or gathering of municipal officials ever with over 2,000 delegates. The first day, the keynote speaker was Justin Trudeau. The second day, it was, I shouldn't be able to find it in my notes here because I can't pronounce his name correctly, but he's the leader of the NDP, and he had a very interesting speech. The third day was the, the keynote speaker was the leader of the PC Party. And the fourth day, it was Elizabeth May, and I just find her extremely interesting, but I think she missed her calling. She should have been a comedian. The president's forum, it was a number of outstanding women. They talked about the tools women bring to the table, and to be encouraging women to run for leadership roles. There were a number of, there were a number of quotes that came from that meeting that were just excellent. The, I, I went to two workshops, or two study tours, that I believe I was the only one from Thompson that went to those. I think the other counselors went to workshops that I didn't go to. The, the one workshop was the workshop on the African-American, or African-Canadian relationships in Halifax. And when I left home in the '60s, the, one of the villages near Halifax was being bulldozed down, and the people relocated. And it was deemed to be one of the, the most refreshing things that had happened in a century. And now, what's happening is the Halifax city has apologized to those people for not including them in the plans. The, the 80 families in that black community expected to be relocated in a new community, and they were transplanted throughout the city of, of Halifax because there really wasn't a lot of consultation. So in recent years, they've been able to apply for, for funds, and they've been apologized to by the city of Halifax. The other study tour that I went to that would be interesting for the city of, of Thompson was the, the study tour on the new library in Halifax. And that library is one of the top libraries, top 10 libraries in the world. And it, it was just amazing, the programs that they have in place. They have five stories, and each story is, is dedicated to certain cultural groups or certain ages. They have, the main floor is for the children. There's cultural groups, the indigenous and the African Canadians. The, they have language classes. They have a media room where people who are, are beginners who want to record music can go and, and remake their tapes. The, there was a lot, a lot of emphasis on, on equity and encouragement for women to run in leadership roles. And interestingly enough, the only two elections that were held, one was for the president of FCM because the vice president of the FCM, who would have been moving up, was defeated in a recent municipal election. So they were required to have an election for the president of FCM. And of course, the outgoing president was our deputy mayor from Winnipeg, Jenny Girasi. And so that was won by a lady, as was the fourth vice president, there was an election. And that was a very dynamic young woman from, who was the deputy mayor of Montreal, right? Sue Lookout. Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure on that. I'm not sure what, what other information you have from that, but it was extremely interesting. I certainly enjoyed it. I have a lot of notes. If anybody has any questions on the agenda, if you want information, I have tons of notes, and I'd be happy to provide them to you. I, I think that the two most pertinent study groups that I went to, I have reported on. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If you have any questions specifically from the information you had on FCM, I probably have notes on it. So thank you for voting for me to go to that conference. It was extremely informational, and I certainly enjoyed it. And I did extend my stay in Nova Scotia, so that's why I missed the last meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments? Deputy Mayor Smook.
I attended the Public Works Finance AMM Conference Call, but I think the highlight of my last two weeks was the Tim Horton Camp Day. I was there, Thompson Fire and Emergency Services were there, and everybody was just there. Stuart was our man of the hour there, and we raised more money than usual in Thompson, and the kids had games to play, the adults were there supporting. It was, it was just excellent. Thank you, Thompson, for, for making that a support. On the 5th and 13th, I was on conference calls with One North Updates. That's updates on our rail lines that is proceeding. There's going to be more news coming up shortly, but I'm tell, it's, it's very positive. We should have a rail to Churchill here. Maybe not in the real near future, but in the future. And I also attended on the 14th, the Community Liaison Meeting at Valet. That's where they keep all us community groups up to date. It was very informational. They tell us how many more layoffs are coming and what's the plans for Valet. The loadout facility is looking very great. And then on the 15th, I was, attended the employee service awards for the city of Thompson. We had employees from five to 40 years that received increments of service awards. So that is, just shows the commitment to Thompson. Our own city manager, Gary Seppertelli, received his 10-year pin, and I'd like to congratulate him and everybody else that was in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Just in closing, a reminder from Paul, it's Nickel Days this weekend. Starts on Thursday, runs for the weekend. Little Nick is in the council chambers. I think there's a, where's Little Nick? He's here today. And so I encourage everyone to support Nickel Days, all the volunteers. And, well, this is the, the week and the next two weeks of festivals and celebrations. So Nickel Days, starting on the 23rd. National Aboriginal Day on June 21, which will be located down here at City Hall. I encourage everyone, that'll be the, the grand march in, will be at 1:00 p.m. The morning ceremony starts at 7:00 a.m. Also, there is Canada Day being scheduled for July 1st, and I'm missing one other. R.D. Parker grad is also there. So support the students, ensuring that they have a safe graduation and everybody arrives home after the celebrations in a safe manner. So with that, any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Byer, Deputy Mayor Smook, call in favor. Carrie, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.